We're in session. Mr. Calister, here are two members, and we need eight for a call.
The council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 26th day of September of the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by capable subscribers on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Fear moves, Ms. Glanter second. If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Mr. President, item number seven on the regular agenda, request from the Department and Council District Four to have that matter received and filed in as much as the owners in compliance. Item number seven.
There are no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Items number one through eight, with the exception of seven, are items for which public hearings have been noticed.
We have no cards. Does anybody want to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll on one through eight, with the exception of seven. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
For the record, items number one and two, they will be continued, the hearing in ordinance till October 17.
Yeah, that's right. There's a second hearing on those.
Item number nine on the regular agenda is the item for which public hearing has been held.
Item number nine, is there any discussion on that? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Items number 10.
Ten, eleven, twelve, we'll have to wait until we get.
You now have 12 members.
We do have 12 now? Okay.
Items number 10 through 32 are items which public hearings have not been held.
We have cards on 21, 31, and 32. Anybody want to be heard on any of those other items? Anybody want to be heard on any other items? If not, the public hearings close, except on 21, 31, and 32. Any specials by council members?
Item 29, Mr. President.
Item 29. Okay, 28 and 29, any other specials? If not, prepare the roll on 10 through 32, with the exception of 21, 28, 29, 29, 31, and 32. Which one did you say, Mr. Holden?
24 and 33.
Which one?
24 and 33.
Well, we didn't get to 33 yet, 24. Okay, prepare the roll on the balance. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 33 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, that is on the supplemental agenda.
Yeah, we have, we have cards on those, and Mr. Holden wanted to call it special. Next item.
Brings you back to item number 21, called special by a member of the public.
Well, we have cards on that.
Mr. President, before you do that, I'd like to move to reconsider item 8 on Friday's agenda, just because there was some information in the report that was omitted, just to amend the report. This was a committee report involving LAHD and code enforcement.
Okay, you want to reconsider 8 on Friday's agenda?
Yeah, I just reread the report, and there was a direction to LAHD to form a joint labor management committee to discuss issues about code enforcement problems that was just omitted inadvertently from the report.
Okay, are there any objections to reconsider 8 on Friday's agenda? Seeing none, the matter is before us.
And then I'd like to move that we amend the report to include the instruction from the committee to the LAHD to form a joint labor management committee to discuss code enforcement issues.
Okay, is there any, any discussion on that motion?
That do to change it, I'm unclear.
It's, it was just inadvertently left from the instructions, that's all. We had directed them, they were discussing that there were some difficulties in procedures on how to, how to do the code enforcement for the housing department's portion of it. And the committee recommended that there be a joint labor management committee to discuss these issues.
Was that personnel?
Yes, it was just inadvertently left out of the report.
Any further discussion?
This is, this is item 8 from Friday's agenda. We caught it after the meeting ended.
If not, prepare the roll on 8 as amended. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you.
That is Friday's agenda. That's approved. Now, we have 21, we have Steve, Steve Moore, who wants to be heard on this?
Mr. President, may I request that we move forthwith on item 30 that we've already adopted, please?
Yeah, forthwith on 30. Steve Moore?
Thank you.
Take that center microphone there.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Steve Moore with Mutual Propane, and I just have a few comments on item number 21, which you actually have, should have a letter in front of you that I'd like to present to you folks. Dear honorable council members, our company is dedicated to developing and serving the propane alternative fuel vehicle market. We have installed a state-of-the-art propane refueling station for, for Watts Labor Community Action Committee, so they could fuel their propane-powered dash buses and have supplied their propane since early 1998. We have lived up to our agreement, and we have given them first-class service. We have no position on the contract extension other than to declare that WLCAC owes our company $22,000, which is long overdue and has given us no indication when or if we'll ever be paid. We have invoices going back as far as 9/15/99. And last time I checked, this is, this is 9/2000. We have a good working relationship with WLCAC, would like to continue a business relationship with them. We realize that we have an agreement with your contractor, not the city, but we'd appreciate any assistance the city can give us to encourage WLCAC to pay our company for services rendered. Thank you very much.
Are you finished, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Public hearing is closed. We have item 21 before us. Mr. Savornic?
I'd like to ask the city attorney a question, if I may, on this item. We most certainly are prepared to recommend that we go forward and extend the contract, but it does give me a great deal of displeasure when I hear that business entities to which the city is doing business are not paying their vendors, because I think the vendors do business with agencies with the city, knowing that, you know, there's a city contract in place, they should be paid, and if they're not being paid, there should be arrangements for that payment to be made. And what bothers me is that some of these invoices, according to the letter that we have from the vendors, are more than a year old. And I'd like to ask the city attorney, is there any way that in regards to the amendment of this contract, that the council is going to ask be extended for six months, that that amendment can be contingent upon the Department of Transportation reviewing what invoices need to be paid and, and are outstanding in order that vendors are being paid in a prompt manner? Because I believe that the city has almost as much culpability as the, as the transportation provider if we are paying the vendor and the vendor isn't paying their vendor. And so, city attorney, is there any way that we can make this contingent upon the Department of Transportation, working with our transit contractor, to make sure that these invoices are being paid and paid on time? And to ask whether or not there are any provisions in the contract that the city has with the vendor, that they are supposed to be paying their vendors on time?
The, the problem is, you have a contract in front of you, and it's, it's basically within the four corners of that. My recommendation would be either to hold this and let us review the contract and see what changes can be made, because without having it in front of me, I can't actually answer that, or to give, to approve it today, if you wish, and then give the instructions to Department of Transportation to go in and make sure that that's done.
Well, I, I think it would probably, it would be helpful, and with Mr. Ridley Thomas's concurrence, I'm going to ask that we continue this one week in order that we can have the Department of Transportation review these outstanding issues, I believe. And if Department of Transportation could come up for a moment, I'd like to see what the ramifications of that request is of mind to continue it one week, because I do believe that the contract has expired or is about to expire, and we want to make sure that service continues in the community. But I also want to make sure that if there are vendors that are not being paid, that they need to be. And so, could we have?
You don't have a contract in front of you, as I understand it. I'm looking at this, and it says to authorize the department to negotiate, and certainly you can give those instructions to the, to the department. you can give those instructions to the, to the department to negotiate.
Let's, let's ask the department real quick. Is there a contract currently in place, or has it expired?
The contract, excuse me, Jim Lefton, Department of Transportation, the contract is currently in place through the end of this month.
So, it's through, it's through Saturday, the 30th?
Yes.
Okay, then what I would like to do is that we, we extend the contract one month, that the action of the council today be a one-month extension with the Department of Transportation resolving the issues in regards to this and any unpaid vendor prior to any other extension being considered.
If I may just provide one piece of information for your consideration, the issue with WLCAC appears to be related to an issue that's affected a number of other contractors that are using propane-powered vehicles. The fuel economy on those vehicles are not what we had hoped they would be, they were new technology vehicles, and we hadn't had any past history. So, we are currently working with the contractors that are affected, including WLCAC, on a report that would seek to provide basically a tweak to their contract to give them a little extra money to cover that marginal increase in cost because of the reduced fuel economy.
I understand, but there are vendors that have done business with them. I'm sure that was, that should have been factored in in the first place.
Yes, yes, it should.
And so, what I would like to do is the council authorize a one-month extension of the existing contract that's due to expire today, and before any other consideration is given to extend that contract any farther, I would like to have the Department of Transportation work with our current transit contractor, WLCAC, to resolve these outstanding issues before we extend that contract one more day than one month, because I don't think it's fair for any of the vendors to be strung out, especially up to a year. Okay.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Your comments are instructive as it relates to this particular contractor not being in a unique situation. In other words, other persons using to take advantage of this new technology have found themselves similarly situated. Did I understand you correctly?
That's correct.
Have you had any conversation with the supplier, who is here testifying that they have not been paid as they would have expected?
We received a call from Mutual Propane a couple of days ago about their concerns, and-
Have you sought to involve yourself as the Department of Transportation to help resolve it?
We've had discussions with WLCAC about the issue of, we were aware of that issue through WLCAC a little bit earlier in the process, and again, their response basically is, when they get the adjustment in the propane costs, they'll pay the vendor. And again, other vendors are also, other contractors are also impacted, but they've, they've maintained their payments to their fuel suppliers, in this case, WLCAC has been unwilling, unable to do so.
All right. It seems to me that it's important to acknowledge that there is a problem that is not particularly unique to this contractor and/or this supplier, and the extent to which the department can be encouraged to help resolve the matter, I deem that to be appropriate, given the time in which we find ourselves, namely that of a crisis with persons not being able to get to and from the hospital, to and from school, and other places that are essential for their everyday life, then the continuance of this service is fundamentally important. But I would hope, Mr. Savornic, that the Department of Transportation would see itself as a mediator in this instance, so as to resolve this prior to it coming back to us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with Councilman Ridley Thomas, and again, I would like to reiterate my motion for today, is that we extend the contract, I'd like to amend this item, to extend the contract for 30 days, and instruct at Mr. Ridley Thomas's suggestion, the Department of Transportation serve as the mediator in regards to resolving this and any other outstanding issues with vendors with our contractor, prior to the council giving any further consideration of extending this contract further. And if there are other transit contractors that are having the same problems as Mr. Ridley Thomas articulated, we'd appreciate that coming back to this council in 30 days in order to tell us if anyone else is having similar problems. And that would be my motion. If I could have a second as an amending motion or substitute motion, Mr. President, that's what I would like to do, and I would ask for an aye vote.
You heard Mr. Savornic's motion, is there any discussion on that? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Item number 24, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, your time is running.
What is the item, what?
24.
Mr. President, I just want somebody to tell, explain before I even start talking why they want to have Attorney General do some additional investigation, given the Justice Department, everybody else, and all the other commissions, investigating the Police Department, they're going to investigate it to death, so I just want to find out.
Is there anybody here that can?
Yes.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes. It's actually not an investigation. I don't think that that's what we're calling for. It's a task force to discuss some problems that have been coming to light, not just recently with Rampart, but over the years, but Rampart has highlighted. And that is, is that somehow or another, the crush of the number of people prosecuted in a major metropolitan area is so large, that what happens is, is that the entire criminal justice system, probation, which I will add to the list at the request of my colleague, Mr. Padilla, the courts themselves, the attorneys on both sides tend to take shortcuts, unless you have the wealth to be represented by someone who insists that no shortcuts be taken. I think that in light of the current situation, it's appropriate to ask the chief officer of the State of California, enforcement officer of the State of California, to make not an inquiry, but to get people together who have expressed to many people, myself included, who are a part of the criminal justice system, their own concern about what the crush of cases has caused in the way of short cutting. And that has led sometimes to push people to plea bargain, who themselves do not feel they are guilty of anything. It has left, led to, as I said, the people I know that are in the court system, on both sides of the aisle, prosecutors and defenders alike, as well as judges, admit and are concerned personally about the idea that we have, in an attempt to deal with the large number of people that are, that have committed crimes allegedly and be prosecuted, we have a system that doesn't meet the need. And I think it's appropriate for this city to ask the Attorney General to convene a task force of all the appropriate people, to sit down and discuss, what are those issues? Maybe there's legislation that needs to be recommended, maybe there needs to be more courts, maybe there needs to be a division. I don't have the answers, this is not my area of expertise. But I think that it would be appropriate for us to say that this is the time to take this look in light of recent events, not as an investigation, frankly, because the problem has been noted by people prior to this, but because this is a backdrop, will perhaps inspire people to come together and to try and figure out how we deal with the logjam in the courts, which often urges people who don't have expensive attorneys to be in a situation where they are pushed to do things that they would not do otherwise. And I think that's an important rights issue of those folks who are not able financially to afford expensive lawyers, and gives us an opportunity to get everybody at the table to discuss it together. And that's all this proposes to do.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. To sort of echo Councilmember Goldberg's comments, wanted to support this motion, but also add as a, as a suggestion, the inclusion of the probation department at the county level, which I think she mentioned already. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the council, I also rise in support of Councilmember Goldberg's motion. You know, clearly, when people started talking about Rampart Division, there was a certain amount of shock as to how all this could have happened. And it wasn't just the police department, but rather, it included the whole justice system. And in looking at that justice system, it looked at the role of the public defender's office and the district attorney's office, as well as the judge, and why it was that there was no red flags being put before us when this kind of activity was going on. Well, it's a system that basically has established itself to prosecute, and in the case when you're prosecuting people who aren't guilty of the crimes that they're being charged with, there has to be some questions, because the system allowed it to happen. And so, it's not just the responsibility of the police department, but rather, the responsibility of an entire system. And, and that's what the motion is calling for, some kind of review, as to how it is that we deal with those issues, and how it is that the courts deal with them, and how it is that the district attorney's dealing with it, and the public defender's office is dealing with it. Shortcuts are necessary sometimes, but they don't make sense when that becomes the entire course. You know, there's a saying that if you want to take the elevator to the top, you just push a button, but the bottom line is, when the elevator's not working, you got to take the steps. And so, from my perspective, right now is the time we have to look at the steps to get to the top, because obviously, the elevator stopped working the way it was supposed to. So, I'm just asking that we also vote unanimously for this motion, asking for other reviews beyond Rampart, because that was the reality of this case. It wasn't just Rampart, it wasn't just LAPD, but rather, the entire system faulted.
Mr. Bernson?
Yes, members of the council, again, I rise in opposition to what I think is a step in the wrong direction. I think we've had plenty of tension on this subject already. I think we're dealing with it, and I think that we have the ability as a city and as a community to deal with this. For us to incur additional federal intervention is not the road to go. Well, whatever it may be, we, Jackie, I wasn't up talking when you were talking, was I? Okay, okay. So, I'd appreciate the same courtesy. Anyway, the, the point is that I, I think that we should not be doing this. I think we should let the course of what is going on now run its course, and obviously, we've learned a lot through the past several months, and I think we're aware of what needs to be done, and I think we're capable of doing it. So, I would urge a no vote on this.
Mr. Holden?
I agree with Mr. Bernson. Nobody's going to ever say that what happened at Rampart was the right thing. It was the wrong thing. Should never have happened. Will this stop it from happening again? No. What kind of legislation is this that's being proposed? Muddy water. That's all it's going to do. They don't say when, what you're going to discover, and what you discover, when it's going to come back, what legislative body will assume the responsibility of it, which means they'll just talk, talk, talk. Now, we're talking with the Justice Department. They're, they're breathing on your neck, your back, arrestor down, police are afraid of their shadows, crime is going up, and you guys sitting around here making more law, or trying to make more law, confusing, I mean, you're doing, out of the goodness of your heart, I think you think you're doing the right thing, and you responded to some, a lot of emotional pressure, but it is not the right thing. If you want to know why people plea bargain, or why they shouldn't plea bargain, then just put in a motion to say, and this is where ACLU can play a role. When somebody plea bargains in certain types of crime, you got to have maybe a judge, retired judge, ACLU, or someone who's the neutral party to say, put the guy in the room and say, this is what you really want to do? Where there's no pressure being applied? That's simple. Is that what the Attorney General is going to come back with? Attorney General is busy enough, even though they can delegate somebody. They're busy enough. There's an easy fix to this problem. If you really want it, it relates to plea bargaining. But this is going to be a long, drawn-out, never-ending, never-getting-aresult, and what it does, everyone's going to feel good who votes aye. So, I'm not going to vote aye, and I'm going to feel good not voting aye, because it's not going to do the right thing. Go read the Daily News today. Crime's up, police won't, won't stop anybody, city council applies more pressure. What are we doing, and what are we talking about? Just be creative then. Be creative, don't pass the ball and let somebody else fumble it. I mean, after all, I mean, if we're not going to do our job, maybe you're going to do what the editor is, they cut your pay. But the fact of the matter is that, just bite the bullet, let's ask somebody, a committee, a neutral party, to review all plea bargains for certain types of crimes. What's wrong with that? That's an approach, but you'd never get it done this way, never, ever at all. And I, if, if our Attorney General says, no, I'm not going to do it, it's only a request anyway, and I don't think he's going to do it anyway. In fact, I'm going to advise him not to. He's too busy doing other things. So, my vote is a no vote on this, because it's not going to go anywhere anyway.
Mr. Pajeco?
Mr. President, colleagues, as you well know, that I was one of the most vocal opponents about having the federal government run the city Los Angeles Police Department, but I believe the motion that has been introduced is not equal to that type of intervention. Let me share with you one experience I had handling one of Rafael Perez's cases when I was in juvenile court. My case involved a young woman who was basically brought to the court on a case where she was assisting other individuals sell drugs. The two individuals who were caught outside the apartment, their Fourth Amendment constitutional rights were violated by Mr. Perez. He basically lied about how he got into the apartment, but once he was in the apartment, the minor began to cry and, and basically said that she was only weighing and packaging the drugs for the adults. When the case came to the juvenile court, the family blamed the sibling that she was living with for the illegal conduct of the minor. When I'm in court as a prosecutor, when I was in court as a prosecutor, and that case was one of 40 cases, and there's nothing on the face of the police report to indicate that anyone lied in terms of getting that person before me in court, and the defense attorney comes over and tells me that the minor is willing to plead guilty or accept responsibility for her role, and we could send her home on probation, it's very difficult for myself and the defense attorney in those circumstances to figure out that there was some illegal conduct on the part of the officer. So, we went ahead and had that minor admit the petition and put her on probation, and that is one of the cases that was overturned because of Rafael Perez. I think it would be healthy for all of us in the system, me as an alumni of the system, to review those type of situations, where a human being on the face of a report can't distinguish illegal conduct that hasn't materialized and is following through on a person who did commit the crime, but the way it was discovered, the shortcuts that were taken, undermined the criminal justice system. So, I support the motion. I think it's a good, healthy approach to looking at the criminal justice system in its entirety, because any system that involves individuals, human beings, obviously is going to have some flaws, and we need to have this type of review. So, I support the motion, and wholeheartedly ask that you support this review of the entire picture. I think it's wrong to single out only one piece for a solution to this type of injustice that occurs to many of our residents and citizens. So, I welcome this type of input and review versus what we were facing with the Department of Justice and the federal government. I think there's a definite, definite difference in what this motion calls for. So, I support it and ask for your support.
Ms. Goldberg?
Thank you, I, I appreciate it. Mr. Bernson, and I just want to be real clear, because I think that there may be a misunderstanding. This is not an investigation. This is not intervention. This is to have a discussion about, with all of the players, not about LAPD, because this could have happened in any other jurisdiction, but about the court system and all of the players in the court system, and what their roles are in dealing with issues- with issues such as when to suppress evidence and when not to, which is about to become a big issue in some of the cases. It is not the city's jurisdiction. That's why I've asked a state officer to look at these things with local people who are also in the state court system, which is not—it's run by the county, but it's all part of a state judicial system. So there's no attempt to have either an investigation, to blame anyone for anything, or to frankly put this entirely on the issue of LAPD, because it's really only in the context of LAPD that I'm requesting it. But I think it is time for us to ask for people beyond LAPD to look at what their role was in all of this. And to have someone do that in a way that is not intended to point fingers or to try to assess blame at all, but to try to look at what might be helpful in making sure that the system works fairly for everyone. And that's why I think it's a request. If the Attorney General doesn't think it's a useful way of looking at this, then the Attorney General can refuse. But I think it's important for us to say that we do not believe that everything worked well outside of the police department either, and that there's—that's a time for review. And I think it's appropriate for us to ask that that review be taken.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. The discussion so far has been enlightening, and I think that Councilwoman Goldberg hit on something that I would like to hear, is that I'd like to know what the thoughts of are the office of the Chief of Police in regards to this motion. I hear from some that they are thinking that this might open up an investigation. From Councilwoman Goldberg, it's to initiate a discussion to have it, and I think that's basically what I see before me. But what I would like to do is to find out whether or not the office of the Chief of Police has any position on this item, and would like to request that, A, we either lay it on—the desk until I can get that answer, or B, continue it one day until they have an opportunity to get here to see whether or not this is something that they can support or not, and I would like to make that motion.
All right. Just let me be clear. Which motion is it? You want it held on the desk, or you want to continue it a day?
Well, if we can get some answer before we adjourn, let's lay it on the desk. And if we don't—if we can't get an answer before it's time to adjourn, continue it one day.
Okay. We have one more speaker first. Cindy, push the button. I'll put you on the list here, too. And actually, since you haven't spoken yet, it's your turn.
I was just informed by the LAPD that they haven't taken—as far as they know, they have no position on this, and so maybe it's easier just to continue it one day to find out and let them know the information, the discussion we had here.
We might want to ask the Police Commission as well, if we're going to do that. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, isn't the bottom-line question embedded in this motion essentially the following? Do we want to get to the bottom of corruption in law enforcement as it relates to the Los Angeles Police Department? Secondary question seems to me to be, do we not want to identify all parties, whether they are specifically LAPD or not, who may have had some involvement in what has led to one of the worst examples of police corruption in the history of this city? If the answer to those two questions happens to be in the affirmative, it would seem to me that we would be favorably disposed to this motion. Now, if the answer is otherwise, then I can see why people would not be interested in this motion. But you might want to be reminded that when there was finger-pointing going on between the police department, the district attorney's office, and all other entities, many of us took the position that a finger-pointing was not going to help anything. But in fact, there was complicity, that is to say, enough complicity to go around such that all of us would need to take stock of who was involved and what, and there should be no hiding place for any single entity or part of the criminal justice system. And so, Madam President, members of the council, unless the maker of the motion is prepared to contradict me, I think that's the intent here. And if that's the intent, I cannot imagine why it would not be in the best interest of all concerned to be thorough, that is to say, comprehensive in our review of the matter and trying to get to the bottom of all that which currently plagues us.
Ms. Chik.
Yes, I also rise to support the motion. Colleagues, I simply do not understand how we could do anything but support it, since all of us are painfully aware of the complexity of the problems that have been exposed in our criminal justice system, in our law enforcement, in our attempts to make our city a safer place to live and work. And clearly, it's the appropriate entity, the Attorney General of the State of California, to turn to, to ask for assistance and scrutiny in other segments of the criminal justice system than the LAPD, to look at the changes that I am sure need to be made in those systems as well. And just as we have stated that we didn't think the efforts could begin and end with LAPD scrutinizing and correcting and reforming itself, the same is true for our court system. So I very much wholeheartedly support this and hope that, colleagues, you do as well.
Mr. Wax.
We had much discussion during the last couple of weeks regarding some of the recommendations from the Chemerinsky report and others. And they—among the most powerful and recommendations they made were a need to put the role of law enforcement in a broader context and to look at the entire criminal justice system, including the judiciary, public defenders, and particularly the prosecutors, prosecuting agencies, both the district attorney and the city attorney. This goes a long way towards addressing that recommendation. And as you know, the council opted not to include all of the Chemerinsky recommendations within the agreement within the Department of Justice on the promise that it would independently pursue the remaining areas of concern, such as community-based policing, changes in the disciplinary system, and the issue we have us before today, the broad issue of the criminal justice system and its relationship to the LAPD. So this really fulfills one of the promises we made, that we would look at the remaining recommendations of the Chemerinsky report, even though they were not included within the context of an agreement with the Department of Justice. And so I second it, co-authored this motion on the hopes that we would show our willingness to, in fact, do as we said and continue to pursue reform beyond the reforms that were incorporated in that agreement. So I wholeheartedly urge that we approve this.
Mr. Fuhr.
Madam President, move the question.
One second, John. Mr. Bernson's the only one left, and he hasn't spoken for a second time, so we'll call Mr. Bernson.
Let me just—I understand where you're coming from, Jackie, and I know it's well-intended. My concern was that we stick another sharp stick in our LAPD, and I don't think we need to do that. But as I read this motion, I recognize the fact that it deals with the criminal justice system, okay? And with that, I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure—this is something that should have been initiated by them a long time ago.
Right.
So—and they haven't done that. The real question is, what is the scope of this going to be? If we could ensure that this is going to be limited to not another opening investigation into Rampart or the LAPD, I don't have a problem with supporting that. Now, how can we ensure that?
Well, I do have a opportunity—I have a phone appointment with the Attorney General. We couldn't get it done before today, but I do have an opportunity to tell him that our goal is not to open an investigation, and I will make that very clear, because that is not the goal.
Could we—could we make that as an amendment to this?
I have no problem with that, because the goal of this is to look at the whole system, not have another group look at LAPD. We've got enough people looking at LAPD. That's why I didn't ask for that.
Okay. In conjunction with that and with that understanding, that amendment—
I have no problem with that.
I can support this. I just want to add one thing.
I have no problem with that.
In spite of what happened at Rampart with a few officers, I still think this is the cleanest police department in the country and the best. I think that we shouldn't be ashamed of our officers. The men and women of our department are still the best. And I automatically bristle when I hear somebody try to take another shot at them. And I hope we all feel that way. What's good for this justice system not only applies to Los Angeles, it applies to everybody in the state. And I think that under that circumstances and with limiting to that scope, I'll be happy to support your motion.
Mr. Holden? You spoke twice, haven't you?
No, no, this one, Mr. President.
I think it was three or four times.
My—thank you, sir. My concern still persists that we are zeroing in on LAPD and Rampart, and all the problems associated with the criminal justice system will be found there, once you do your study. Now, the LAPD is not the only department in the state or in the nation that we know that have problems. And if you really want to have a data search, if that's what you're really talking about, then I don't think you just want to say LAPD or LAPD and like similar cases throughout the state, because that's what the Attorney General is—you ask the Attorney General to do. And I mean, I'm not going to make the amendment, but if you stand up and say that's what you want to do, then I can vote aye. Otherwise, I mean, I just have—to—no, that was a different amendment.
I have no objection to making it generic to the problem that LAPD was involved in, but could have happened in any place, because the issue I'm trying to raise is not specific to LAPD. It's specific to the criminal justice system and its role in protecting the rights of people.
Right. So then I hear the legislative intent—the amendment would be specific to the criminal justice system, not—you know, and I don't have to say not LAPD, but like what happened—
Yes, exactly.
—what happened in Los Angeles.
For example.
For example.
As in what happened in LAPD, but not exclusive to them.
All right.
Because I think the issues we're trying to get a look at are the issues of how the criminal justice system works for poor people. And sometimes, it just doesn't work. And sometimes, that's because there's corruption, and sometimes, it's because there's just too many cases, and people are making shortcuts. But whatever the reasons are, it—somebody has to begin looking at this problem, and we can't just sit and say, "If only LAPD were different, none of this would have happened." And I don't believe that.
I understand that. I understand that, when they have sufficient funds, they get a good attorney, et cetera, et cetera. But we still can't get into the minds of a liar, no matter how much research we do. We cannot—and I don't want anybody to think that we can. If a guy's going to stand up on a witness stand and lies about what some person did or did not do, whatever we do here today or thereafter—hereafter—will not resolve that at all. But we can clean it up to the extent where people are honest and all the evidence is on the table. With that, and as with the amendment, then I would go with aye.
Mr. Ridley Thomas? Okay, we have—we have some motions before, so you give us the motions.
Okay. One motion is Goldberg-Padia to add probation department to the list.
All right. Okay, that's—
And the second one is to not create an investigation.
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Is that Mr. Bernson's motion?
Yes, that's Mr. Bernson's motion. And then Mr. Holden, in a discussion with you a moment ago, essentially specific to the entire criminal justice system.
I—it's in general to the entire criminal justice system with a specific example of LAPD, but not limited to that, because it could have been in any jurisdiction within the criminal courts.
Okay.
I accept all of them as—
Those are all accepted. Now, we do—we do have a motion by Mr. Savornich to continue one day. So prepare the roll on continuing one day.
Ask for no vote.
Prepare the roll.
Nobody's working. We're all pushing nothing.
Mr. Savornich withdraws his motion. So now we have 24 as amended. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, four noes.
Prepare the roll on 24 as amended. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Item number 28, called special by Councilmember Chik.
Mrs. Chik.
Yes, colleagues, this is very much a change of subject and compared to issues of our criminal justice system and coming up discussion of water quality. This is a lighter subject, but important all the same. Probably, most of you are not aware that the city of Los Angeles has quite an extensive art collection. In fact, the city is not terribly aware of what its art collection is. It is compiled of paintings and sculptures and other objects of art, things that have been given as gifts from other countries and visiting dignitaries. There are objects of considerable value and art-worthiness, and others perhaps not so much so. I found out about the art collection when I was looking for things to display in the office here that would be of no additional cost to the taxpayers and found out that stuck away in a dark warehouse piled up in a corner are some pretty amazing pieces of art that are available to any of us who have places to display them where the public can see. My motion, going to committee, is asking for the department to tell us what it would take to have an assessment of the art collection, to organize it, to categorize it, to make suggestions to us on how it should be used. Because to be of public benefit, an art collection should be displayed, should be seen by the public. And that is not happening today. We have another motion going forward that I introduced to look at forming a city museum, a museum of the city of Los Angeles, perhaps by having traveling exhibits, perhaps by looking at space here in the mall or space in an existing museum. Some of this art collection could possibly be displayed in that way. But the bottom line is, one, we should have a sense of what we really own, and, two, we should evaluate what is the best use for this collection. Are some of the things things that perhaps we should donate and no longer own? But how do we bring such a collection to the public so that they can benefit from our having it? That's my hope for this motion, and I look forward to working with the Cultural Affairs Department, with Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee, and hope that we can find ways to benefit more from what we already own. Thank you.
Okay, there's—prepare the roll on 28. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Now we have 29.
Called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, 29.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is one of those issues that's been irking me since I first found out about it, probably seven, eight years ago. And maybe everybody else feels comfortable with it, but I always have to bring it up because I feel uncomfortable with it. We're talking about a subsidy for city employees to use public transportation. And Mr. Deaton will remember that I always kind of bring this up, because I clearly believe that we should be encouraging employees to use public transportation. But we also have a policy where we encourage employees to bring their cars and park by themselves. We currently have parking subsidies that we give employees for bringing their car by themselves that is much greater than the subsidy we provide employees for using public And I think there's a disparity there in our policy. And I think it's great that we can negotiate with employees what we'll give them as a subsidy to use public transportation, but I think it doesn't compare to the subsidy we give employees who drive their personal cars to a parking lot. And I'd like to know the difference. What are we paying employees, let's say on Sixth and Spring, to drive their car by themselves and park it, versus what we're proposing today to provide employees who basically use public transportation to come to work?
The joint—
The Joint Labor Management Committee on Commute Options and Parking has recently finalized a new MOU, which should be coming to the council within the next week or two, just putting the finishing touches on it. The new MOU provides that there will be an increase in the transit subsidy of up to $50 a month, and employees' employee parking permits will be raised from their current $25 fee to $40. So the transit subsidy under the new MOU will actually exceed the new parking fee. With respect to the various lots, it depends on which lots we're talking about. The city owns a number of lots, and we don't put a specific value on the city-owned lots. The leased lots, the cost of each space varies by lot from anywhere from $30 up to $140. So the subsidy varies by lot.
Right, and members of the council, I just want to point that out, because when we lease space, we lease parks and parking spaces, and many times the square footage for the parking space is higher than the square footage for the actual building. And we do that to basically accommodate city employees. We don't do it to accommodate necessarily carpools of city employees, or to encourage city employees to basically use public transportation. We basically do it as an accommodation. And I know that in some instances, the subsidies is much higher than in others. And I just kind of wanted to point that out because it's something that just bothers me. If we're committed to basically using public transportation, it'd be nice if everybody got the same amount. And even if you were being paid $90 to use public transportation and a bus pass only costs you 60 bucks, that might be an incentive to take the bus. But instead, we provide you a free parking spot, and what that becomes is an incentive to drive your car.
The $50 fee was determined on the basis of a survey of employees who were asked what it would take to get them out of their cars and use public transportation, and that was the basis of the $50 fee.
Uh huh.
And it was hoped that through the $50 fee and the trade-off of having to pay more for parking space, that more people would be encouraged to use public transit.
Right, and that.
And we encourage carpooling by lesser parking fees.
Again, and I just will continue to bring it up because I think that we provide sometimes the wrong incentives indirectly. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on 29? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 31, called special by Councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick, we do have people that want to be heard. Some have been heard already.
Yeah, I realize there's a public hearing, and so I think we need to let the public speak first, and I'll save my comments for after.
We have David Maury from the state, some department, I don't know what it is.
Okay, I'm Dr. David Maury. I'm a toxicologist. I'm employed by the state of California in the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, OEHHA, or OEHA. I work in Oakland. We're separate from the Department of Health Services. Our function is to do environmental risk assessment for hazardous chemicals. As part of my work at OEHA, I wrote the Public Health Goal Document for Chromium in Drinking Water. The Public Health Goal Document is part of a program set up by the California Safe Drinking Water Act, and the program has two parts. One is risk assessment, and the other is risk management. The risk assessment part is the part that we deal with, and our job is to assess the risks of chemicals in drinking water and to establish levels that we feel would be, would not pose a significant hazard for those chemicals. When we do that, then we publish that information in the form of a Public Health Goal Document after it's publicly reviewed, reviewed by people in academia and so forth. This particular document was published in February of 1999. And after reviewing all the data available to us, we set a level of 2.5 parts per billion for total chromium in drinking water. Total chromium is, as you know, made up of chrome III and chromium VI. Chromium VI is the part that's toxic and that is of concern to us. In establishing the Public Health Goal for Chromium, we set a level, safe level for chromium VI, or hexavalan chromium, of 0.2 parts per billion. So, and this is based on evidence for that this chemical is carcinogenic in humans when it's consumed, and it's based on the estimated cancer potency of this chemical. So these numbers are compared to the state maximum contaminant level, which is 50 parts per billion. So we've, in this document, we've put forward a much lower level than the current maximum contaminant level for chromium in drinking water. And subsequent to this, it'll be up to the Department of Health Services to review this information and to establish a new maximum contaminant level if they feel that that's essential for protecting public health. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much.
Connor Evert, Southern California Watershed Alliance.
Just a second.
Yep.
Mr. Wax.
I appreciate it, doctor. I think it's Maury coming down from Sacramento and asked if they would stay. They really were going to be at the front table here as expert witnesses, so hopefully after the public hearings are completed, the people who are here from the state will also remain to be able to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. I work with watershed groups from Santa Barbara to Mexico. I'm afraid I don't know a lot more about this issue than those of us who have seen the movie and read the newspaper reports. However, I have been involved with a series of educational workshops that the Department of Water and Power has done relating to the Eastside Recycling Plant. I see that both items are here together. I think we have covered the Eastside Recycling Plant in terms of the issues of the plant going online. I do not think that there has been proper response to the chromium issue in terms of where the plume is, where it's coming from, and knowing more information. I would hope that we could, and I will be in disagreement with LADWP about this, I'm sure, but that we could close the wells until we've resolved that issue. But at the same time, I do not think we should tie it together with the recycling plant. I think both have issues, and both need to be knelt with, but not together. Thank you very much.
We have a limited time on this, so just be as brief as possible and don't repeat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DWP's misguided plan to add recycled sewage water to the city's drinking water supplies, and that's the East Valley Water Reclamation Project, is unthinkable. Although the DWP claims its filtration process will remove toxic pollutants from all the human hospital and industrial sewage waste, there are far too many unknown to risk putting the public's health in such great jeopardy. Now, the DWP has failed to prove the safety of the reclamation project. Agency officials continually cite health studies of residents who drink reclaimed sewage water from the Montebello-Farbay Recharge Project as proof. Yes, the 1999 RAN study of the Farbay Project did not conclusively find a link between the infant mortality and birth defects. However, the authors of the study wrote, "The results of this or any other epidemiological study cannot certify that reclaimed water has no effect on human health. We can conclude, however, that if reclaimed water is causing higher rates of any of these adverse birth outcomes, the increase is unestimatable." Now, the negative effects of contaminants on the fetus, they also go into that, which we don't know until after the child has grown into teenage, and then the problems begin. RAN conducted a study published in 1996 on the health effects of the Montebello-Farbay Project and said, "A significant higher rate of liver cancer was observed in the area with the highest percentage of reclaimed water." But they were unsure that there was a causal relationship between the two. And the experts keep going on and on, and which the conclusion is that nobody seems to know what they're doing. There is no conclusion on any of this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Melman. Brad Holland. And then there would be Denise Wingate. Let's be as brief as possible, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Byrd Holland, Beachwood Canyon Neighborhood Association. I'm also a Los Angeles resident and homeowner for the past 40 years. President Ferraro, members of the City Council, and guests. Our political preferences may differ, but hopefully we can all agree with Vice President Gore when he recently said, "Every child in America, when they come home from school, should be able to turn on the faucet and get a clean glass of water." I'm here to speak for my three grandchildren, ages one and a half, three, and 12, and for the well-being and safety of all babies and children. If toilet water is allowed to go forward, there is reason to believe that healthy children and babies would become diseased children and babies from drinking treated toilet water and treated chemical wastewater. One might say, "Let them eat cake. Drink bottled water." As cake is expensive for millions, so is bottled water. As the debate goes on among biochemists, some say that toilet-to-tap water is safe for all to drink, including babies and children. An opposing opinion by Dave Schubert, a Salt Institute biochemist and safety committee member, gave this frightening thought that substances whose properties might not be fully understood by scientists, substances like tiny molecules of biotech and medical waste, might be able to slip through the treatment process undetected. Yes, frightening. In closing, I'd like to say also that the public in general hasn't gotten the full word about drinking treated wastewater and what it would mean to them and the safety of their children. But they will soon know. Every day concerned citizens are joining the rebellion, the verbal rebellion started by Councilman Joel Wax. I respectfully ask the City Council to join with me, and if not with me, with my grandchildren, with all the other children and babies, to make sure this thing never happens. And thank you for listening, and may God bless you, and may God bless our city.
Denise Wingate, and then Ann Hoyt. Ann Hoyt would be after Ms. Wingate.
Hi, my name is Denise Wingate. I'm a resident of Los Feliz, and I sit on the Board of the Los Feliz Improvement Association. It is a fact that chromium III, which is relatively harmless, transforms into chromium VI during water treatment, specifically chlorination. I'm sure we all know about chromium VI, thanks to Ms. Brockovich's testimony. Oxidation transforms one to the other. Testing water at the plant to determine levels in municipal systems does not account for further oxidation between the plant and the tap. The discovery of chromium VI has convinced me of the inability of the DWP to ensure the standards of the water we are drinking now, let alone a toxic mix of chemicals and pollutants which will be added in this toilet-to-tap project. The California Department of Health and LA Regional Water Quality Control are responsible for setting such inadequate standards for our drinking water. We can only assume that this will lead to inadequate monitoring and enforcement. Incidentally, I believe that chromium VI wasn't detected earlier because it wasn't something that they tested for routinely. How many other things aren't tested for routinely? That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Ann Hoyt.
I give my time to Robert Edwards.
Okay, we'll get to Robert Edwards.
He will get my extra time, please. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Edwards, and yes, I'm that Robert Edwards. I've chaired LEARN for the Los Angeles Unified School District Parents for the last six years, brought you a few unusual items like public involvement in their public education system, standards, standards-based promotion, among a lot of other things, here today, this morning, on the toilet-to-tap issue. We brought you all down this morning, and I apologize for the time on it, a package regarding the geological, biological, and health impacts of the toilet-to-tap project. The first thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, the reason that I mention the LAUSD and what I've gone through for these last six years there, is I want you to realize I recognize administrative gobbledegook when I hear it, and I have been to a lot of meetings with the DWP regarding this program, and administrative gobbledegook is what I have heard. I'd like you also to know that at all of the meetings that I've been in attendance with the DWP, although they are bringing out to you the idea that they have engaged in public output and engagement, at every attendance that they went to, the majority, 80 to 90 percent of the folks who saw their program signed petitions against it, and those petitions are in the possession of Mr. Wax right now. There are over 1,500 of them. The first thing I'd like to show you is that the San Fernando, if you look at the map pages here, the San Fernando East, San Fernando Valley aquifer is a federal superfund site. Only 20 percent of the water of the city of Los Angeles is allowed to come to that because, according to the federal EPA and the Department of Health, State of California, the water is unfit for human consumption. In regards to a number of the maps that you are in this package, I'd like you to look specifically at the US EPA maps 3.6 through 3.7, which will give you an extent as to the idea, an idea as the extent of this contamination. The entire two-thirds of this aquifer is rendered unfit for human consumption. The toilet-to-tap project is centered on the top one-third. What we are doing is putting biological and bacterial contaminants upstream from where we already have volatile organic compounds. This is unthinkable. I'm going to bring this, the tech is given to you here regarding the geology, regarding what will happen with complete saturation of alluvial gravels and soils, the idea of the amount of waters that are actually going into the aquifer, the fact that we are taking 80,000 acre feet a year out of it, that 80,000 acre feet is about its capacity for recharge, that the entire thing holds 112, and the DWP is planning to take 152,000 acre feet a year out of it. You can't take 152,000 acre feet out of a glass that only holds 112 unless you put 60,000 acre feet back in per year. The idea that this project is going to take five years for it to reach the spreading grounds to the wellheads is ridiculous. The flow charts and information from Caltech, information from all the geologists, including the Department of Water and Power in the area, say that this is nonsense. It will be there in a year or less. At the same time, the EPA requires that any project that has a potential for significant impacts must be monitored regularly. This will not be checked for three years. In three years, the damage could be so significant that it could never be cleaned up. I wanted to give you just a couple of basic, straight-on thoughts that everyone can understand. Anyone who has a cat, an indoor cat, understands how water spreads in sand. And for every two feet that this water goes down, it's going to spread laterally eight. Anyone who has a fish aquarium and has looked at this way that this is being done understands that last bottom inch of sand on your fish aquarium, and you have the filter underneath, you pull the water down through the sand, it goes into the filter, just as is in the DWP plan. It is pulled out, put through a filtration process of charcoal and fiber, and then put back in. No matter how often you change the charcoal and you change the fiber in the filter, unless you boil and clean that sand every six months, your fish die. They get something called ich. It is a black mold, their tails, their fins rot off, and as I said, the fish die. We are being told by the Department of Water and Power that by putting this effluence on the ground, that it hits the ground, in six months, all of the viruses and bacteria will die. die. All of you know from your science classes in high school that the way to make bacteria grow is to put it in a moist, nutrient, warm environment, deprived of UV, and it will grow and proliferate at unbelievable levels. You're building the world's largest cat box. You're putting the world's largest Petri dishes of bacteria and biological substances on top of it. You're using the world's worst forms of filtration to guarantee it, and what is going to happen is you are looking at an eighty percent increase in the amount of water that is drawn out of there. What this will have in effect geologically, the entire area, the Hanson Dam spreading grounds, is there because it is the convergence of five earthquake thrusts.
Mr. Edwards.
Including the Northridge and the Mission Hills.
Mr. Edwards, would you wrap it up, please?
Yes, please. I am, my apologies for not having the technical information to you earlier. I hope that the simple descriptions that we all understand are enough to make you think about this for a minute, and I appreciate your time this morning. Please take the time to go through the maps. They are the United, they are the United Environmental Protection Agency, the Upper Los Angeles Area River Masters.
Thank you very much.
Department of Water and Power.
Jenny Pelton, and then Shirley Byrd.
I went to a meeting sponsored by the DWP recently in North Hollywood. There were several speakers, some of which were engineers from the DWP. They stressed the fact that California will be facing a serious crisis in our water supply. One of the three sources of our supply is the Colorado River, and we will be limited soon of our ration from that source because it will be portioned out to other places. One of those places is Mexico. If our supply is so crucial, why are we going to give another country our fresh water, and we will be drinking toilet water? This is totally wrong and unacceptable. It is the responsibility of California and our country to take care of its citizens before it takes care of any other country, especially in a life-threatening situation as facing water shortage. When I questioned this, the speaker muttered something like, "Because they are in the same Delta Basin." And before he could elaborate, he was interrupted by one of the speakers who changed the subject. They had no justifiable reason for this, and they were evading the issue. We should not tolerate this. We should not be sending our precious fresh water out of the country for any reason. They went on to say that in the next decade, the population of California will be increasing by the millions. And they stated that diversity is a wonderful thing. Well, if diversity will cause us to drink toilet water, then it will be adversity for us citizens. It will not only be changing our quality of life, but will cause many unforeseen hazards, hazards which the experts say are nonexistent. How can they say with certainty that we will not get AIDS, herpes, or any other disease that can be fatal? Only after they have used us as guinea pigs will they know for sure. How would you like to be one of their guinea pigs? I would like to suggest that the City Council should appeal to Governor Davis to put our National Guards across the border with Mexico to stop this uncontrolled immigration into our state. Because if we have to resort to drinking toilet water, then we cannot take care of the population that is already here. How can we possibly take care of the millions more that we know will be joining us? Thank you. I would like to submit my speech.
Yes, Sergeant, when do you get that? Shirley Byrd.
I defer to Jude Margolis.
Okay. Jude, did you speak before?
I have spoken before.
Yeah, well, I'll give you...
I'll talk for just one moment.
Please.
I spoke before the Council a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to tell you that we have been out only a few weeks collecting these fourteen hundred letters, like Robert said, and no one in L.A. that I collected letters from knew anything about this ten-year project, and when they heard about it, they wanted nothing to do with it. On your desk this morning, you were handed my report. It's called "How Safe Is That?" Not Safe at All. Please read it. I spent months reading books and scientific documentation, and this is not a safe project, and it can't go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Fran Rockenbach, did you speak already?
No, sir, I haven't.
Okay, lift the microphone up.
I'll be, I'll be real quick. I heard a rumor that this entire issue that you've been listening to about recycling sewage from homes and industry and medical, that all this is about a political issue, that this whole big noise and this whole project is about what Mr. Wax and Mr. Alikon want to do when they grow up. And I don't think that that's true. I don't think that Robert Edwards is running for any public office, yet he's got a very compelling argument here. I think that what we're doing here and what we're faced with now is we're talking about politics and money over here, and we're talking about the future of the people of Los Angeles. And when I think that this issue transcends the politics and the power of money, and it speaks directly to the health and safety of the future of Los Angeles, I'm asking you all to do one thing real special, and that includes you, Cindy, Ms. Akowski. Cindy, I'm asking you all, for all of you, to take these two motions, and I want you to pretend like they're your own motion. I want you to support them just like as if they were your own motions for one reason and one reason only, and that is that we're all watching you. We're all watching how you vote today, and how you vote today will tell us who you're really working for. So please, work for the people of Los Angeles. This is very, very important, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Those are all the cards we have, so the public hearing is closed. That was on item thirty-one and thirty-two. Now we have Mrs. Chick who made a motion.
Yes, colleagues, once again, the issue of clean drinking water is before us, and we have heard from experts, we certainly have been reading articles in the newspaper, we've been watching other levels of government join with us in their concern. And I agree that, at this point, it is not cause for alarm in terms of calling on the public to be afraid to drink the water in Los Angeles. That is not the case. However, there is great cause for concern. There are too many very important unanswered questions. The level of chromium-6, what the standard should be, what is the level and why does it keep changing? Why is it rising in some places? And very importantly, in an amendment to my own motion, where are the sources of these chemicals, and what are we doing to prevent their being present at any level in our drinking water? I think some of you, along with me, received this booklet in the mail from DWP, and I thought the timing was interesting as all of these questions arise, that DWP was already preparing a booklet to talk about the water quality in our city. I do have to say, and while we have our general manager in the room, I did not major in science, and maybe that's why I was having a little bit of trouble in translating this into layman's language, and I couldn't find chromium or chromium-6 on here, and perhaps that's something that needs to be highlighted and made much more clear, and I would like to have Mr. Freeman, if you would, come and respond to that comment at the very least. But my motion, colleagues, asks, what have we done about chromium-6? What are we continuing to do, and what further do we need to do? And also, and very importantly, stresses the need for the DWP to be the lead agency for us here in the city, to coordinate with all of the other government levels, from the federal government on down, to make sure that we are working together, that it is an integrated and comprehensive approach, because it's not only the water here in Los Angeles, it's a statewide issue, it's a national issue. Our concern and our focus must be on the water here that our constituency drinks. Also, the question, what happens when these elements are mixed? When chromium-6 gets mixed with all the other chemicals in the water? And, Mr. Freeman, I noticed you recently had a report out on the whole issue of arsenic and the level of arsenic in the water. So if you could both address my comments and concern for clarification in the booklet, and then also to give us a brief summary in response particularly to item thirty-two...
Okay, Mrs. Chick.
... what the department and the timeline to get this report to come forward. These are pressing public health issues. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes, I'll be brief. This report was prepared well before the concerns about chromium-6 became focused. And I will give this council and the people that made the motions credit for helping to focus public opinion and attention in terms of doing more. We went out eighteen months ago and started testing for it, and what we found was well below the state standard, so we, perhaps incorrectly, felt that there was no alarm. But there is a cause for concern, and I will say this, I think we ought to direct our attention, not only to the DWP, and I take full responsibility for our doing a whole lot more, including starting a research program on ion exchange to get this stuff out of the water. Nobody's doing it, I found out. There is no one doing any research on ion exchange, not the Health Department, not the EPA, not anyone, and I think that we should start doing that, because the real answer is to get this stuff out of the water completely. But the EPA has done next to nothing, that I can find. I mean, we had a defense industry in this area, Lockheed and all these companies, and they left us a legacy of pollution. And it's a toxic problem in the ground, it's a superfund problem, and neither the federal EPA nor the state EPA has done doodly squat about it, that I can find out. And so I think that we ought to send a message to them also. I'm not pointing fingers. We simply are a messenger here, but we have a responsibility, and I think that we need to launch a research program to get the stuff out of the water.
Okay, colleagues, for support of my motion...
Mrs. Chick, Mrs. Burnson, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, let me start off by saying that I have the greatest respect for Mr. Freeman. I think that he would not intentionally move forward with anything that would be harmful. However, we're dealing with a subject that maybe none of us know all the answers to, and I think he is the first to concur with that. If we look to the EPA, and we look to the State Water Control Board, or even the County Control Board, which signed off on Sunshine Canyon, a dump less than a mile above the city and region's water supply, we quickly lose confidence in those groups. So my feeling is this, until we know what the answers are, we need to proceed very cautiously. We should not go ahead with a program that potentially may contaminate our groundwater supply. And then also, this poses the question, I think you raised it just now, if we don't use groundwater until we find a way to clean that up, where do we get the water to replace that? If we buy it from the Metropolitan Water District, which we are entitled to twenty-three percent of all the water that Metropolitan Water District has, which we rarely use any of, is there any guarantee that's going to be any cleaner or any better? It probably may not be as good as our water, particularly the water that comes down from the California Aqueduct from the mountains. So I think that we need to proceed. I hate to try to tie the hands of Mr. Freeman, I don't think he, that's not my intent, David, but I think that we need to listen. Anytime there's concern where public health and welfare are concerned, we have to take heed, and we have to make sure that before we go ahead with programs that they're entirely safe. So I guess what we're asking now is that you spend some time, look into it, we're going to ask the state, I think this motion asks the state to look into the quality of water throughout the state, and that we not proceed with a means of any type of, anything which may add contamination, and that we also try to get the state to find a way to deal with cleaning up that which may be contaminated with chromium and other chemicals which may be harmful to our health. So with that spirit, I'm going to vote for this, but I do want you to know that I am totally supportive. I know you're going to try to do the right thing, and we'll be with you on that.
Thank you, sir.
Wax.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, my motion thirty-one basically addresses two issues. They're related, but I want to speak to them separately for the moment. The first issue is the threat of hexavalent chromium, chromium-6 in our drinking water supply, and the second is the issue of holding up on the East Valley Water Reclamation Project in part because of the impact of chromium-6. The issue of chromium-6, which is the issue that Erin Brockovich had raised to us so eloquently two weeks ago, is an issue that really should cause great concern to the people in the city of Los Angeles. The fact of the matter is chromium-6 is a carcinogen. Most medical, or many medical and scientific experts don't believe it should be present in the water at all. The fact of the matter is that it is now present in our water to a much greater degree than we had previously thought and had previously been reported. It is also present in our water in an amount greater than that standard that is being proposed by the state Environmental Health Assessment. It's substantially greater than what they are proposing. It is greater than what many scientific and medical experts believe should be there, and it is greater than we ourselves had believed were there. That is a cause for concern, and it is supported even further by the recent tests that the county has done, not of the wells and the monitoring sites, but of actually sources of drinking water itself, which indicated a substantial presence of chromium-6, which should not be in the water. Now, we've got to make sure that we do not drink water that exceeds the standards that are being proposed by the state now. It is not good enough to be in conformance with existing standards, because the proposal by the state in light of the health risk is to lower those standards dramatically. And those standards that had previously been set were set long before we had the knowledge we have today. So the first part of my motion, which is very much in conjunction with Mrs. Chick's motion, is to deal with the issue of chromium-6. When we had this before us two years ago, in, I believe it was Council and Ms. Akowski's committee, we recommended, and the EPA gave four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a task force to do further studies. We have not yet had a public revealing of the results of those studies, and those are long overdue, Mr. Freeman, and I, the first part of my motion is simply to ask and to insist that the task force studies over the last eighteen months in fact be made public. The second issue is an issue I've raised on a prior occasion, and that is the East Valley Water Reclamation Project. Not only the process through which it was approved, but the possibility of whether or not there are issues affecting safely had been considered. My issue on number two here of thirty-one is to hold that project, at least insofar as it relates to use for potable drinking water sources, until we consider the impact of chromium-6 on that, because it's going to the same source, basically. The two are dealing with the same source. They are dealing with our aquifer in the valley, and they need to be related. So I'm going to ask that we vote on both parts. If you want to separate them, you can, but one is to ask the task force to reveal its findings so that we take the steps to lower our chromium-6 standards.
We're not even close to voting on it yet.
Yeah, and the second to be to hold up on the East Valley Reclamation Project until we do so.
All right. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and then I have a couple of comments. Well, first, let me just say that I don't know about the rest of you, but I received information from Heal the Bay, from the Santa Monica Audubon, Sierra Club, San Gabriel Valley, Friends of the Los Angeles River, Southern California Watershed Alliance, amongst many others, saying that they hope we do not hold up on the East Valley Reclamation Project. So I guess, and a whole list of other organizations and individuals. So I would prefer to see that item sent back to committee, Environmental Quality Committee, and to have a much longer discussion and debate of it because... and to have a much longer discussion and debate of it, because I don't feel like I have enough information on the basis of it. But I do think that since it's an important project, that we all need to learn more about it, and so I would move that at least that part of it be referred to Environmental Quality Committee and asked that they have hearings and let us get a full report on this project and what the possible dangers are, and why people in the environmental community at least took the time to write to me and say that they thought it should continue. As to the first issue, you know, there may be, there are many elements in life which may not be safe at any level. And I don't know, chromium six may be one of them, but before I vote for us to do anything about it, I need to get some information. Assume we told you we wanted zero chromium six in our water. Is that possible?
We just shut down all the groundwater wells, which is 15 percent of our water supply.
All right. If we shut down the 15 percent of our water supply and we bought water from MWD, could we guarantee it had no chromium six in it?
Well, I don't know, I haven't tested the water, but assume that it doesn't have chromium six in it. It has other troublesome contaminants in there that have the same issue, that they're below the standard but above the goal set by the health people. And you're in the same boat with just a different contaminant.
So we'd do better on chromium six, but we would do worse on other things than our current water supply.
That's right.
Is there any way to make an evaluation of what that trade-off might be, which have more serious harmful effects than others?
I'm sure that the scientists could give you an evaluation, but, you know, on the surface, you know, you're trading one concern, and it's a legitimate concern, for another legitimate concern. And if you go to the Owens Valley Water, then you've got the same problem with arsenic.
Arsenic, yes, I just saw that report. If we were, is there a way to remove chromium six from the water that we're currently getting?
Well, I mentioned, I mentioned earlier, there's no technology that's been perfected, but the theory of ion exchange holds promise, and I feel that we need to launch, no one else is doing it, but I think we need to launch a research effort ourselves to learn how to do it. I think that there is some merit to saying that we cannot just rely on agencies of the state of California or the federal government. We have to engage in self-help here.
Okay. Last question. If we bought water from MWD, what would be the additional charge to ratepayers?
I think that we'd have to have someone lead the charge for a 10 percent rate increase on water.
Okay. Not on all water, just on the 10 or 15 percent?
No, it would amount to the sum of money to pay for the replacement. We looked at the numbers. Would raise the water rates about 10 percent overall.
Okay. Okay, Jackie, just let me be clear on your motion was to send just the second item or all of it?
Well, no, actually, I just moved to send the second item.
Okay. All right. I just want the clarification.
Because I don't have, this is as much information.
If I could make one more statement, and, you know, I'll do whatever the council votes, obviously. Doesn't really, we're neutral on this in a sense. But the 15 percent of the groundwater is the only water that we're really sure of in a drought. And so it's not just reducing the water supply 15 percent, it is jeopardizing, in my view, the adequacy of water supply in a drought.
Okay. Hang on, we have lots more people to be heard. Mr. Ridley Thomas. Six so far.
Madam President, members of the council, I simply rise to acknowledge in a affirmative way both Ms. Chick and Mr. Wax for bringing this issue to our attention. I want to additionally say that this matter of environment and the full sense of what we have come to know and appreciate is increasingly high on our radar in terms of public policy in the city of Los Angeles. I think that's a good thing. Maybe it's attributable to the inevitable wisdom of the council with respect to the new chair, the committee having to dig in here and try to figure out what's going on. But I'd like to ask the CLA to come forward just for a moment to clarify a couple of issues. I mentioned to Ms. Chick last week that it struck me as quite appropriate to have this matter heard. One piece of it has already been disposed of with respect to urging the governor to take action on the first part of the motion introduced by Mr. Wax and Ms. Chick. Now, the balance of the items before us, some of which are in committee now, and we are currently considering that. So if the CLA would just give us a brief summary of that and their view of it, it would be helpful.
There are currently three items in the Environmental Quality Waste Management Committee regarding this issue. One is specific to the East Valley Water Reclamation Project, where the committee has held public hearings and is continuing to look at that project specifically. There are two other motions pending. One is regarding groundwater pollution and contamination in the San Fernando Valley. It's much broader. It looks at contamination overall. The direction is to look at a plan to mitigate and abate contamination, the cost of that abatement, and steps to prevent further contamination. So it's partially related. The other pending motion regards the actual standard-setting process and watching that and looking at what the impacts would be to the water's, the city's water supply.
Well, then, thank you very much. I think what's appropriate, and we need to be attentive to the items before us. Item 31 is the Wax, Ms. Akowski, Chick motion. Item 32 is the Chick, Fuhr, Wax motion. Both of them in the main are quite the same. I would move that we adopt the two of them, with the exception of item number three, in the Wax, Ms. Akowski, Chick motion. I refer that to committee now pursuant to the CLA's comments, because we're already working on that. And the balance of it, go forward as instructed with the upshot of it ultimately returning to committee for a recommendation to council, and I would so move.
Okay. Just, Ms. Goldberg and Mr. Fuhr had already moved, Mark, Ms. Goldberg and Mr. Fuhr had already moved to send item three of motion 31 to committee.
Right.
So that's consistent with what you had said.
And the balance of it should go forward, but ultimately all of it comes back.
I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same, well, we're not done yet, guys. Hang on. Mr. Holden wants to be heard next.
According to Ms. Chick's motion and the comments from the public, you're saying that when you filter into the water chlorine, and then you have some chromium two in, somehow it turns to be chromium six. The motion says, discover, establish, if you can, how we get chromium six into the water. They're already saying what they think the mixture, what mixture causes that to happen, I don't know. The other thing I like, however, is that Department of Water and Power has been studying this, testing the waters since 1998. That's correct, right?
Yes, sir.
And what's been your finding is been at a safe level, marginal, not safe level?
Well, we're not the doctor.
Has it been safe, yes or no?
According to the state law, it's been safe, because it's well below the standards that the state sets.
All right. So it's well below, is it well below in the valley also? Well below in the inner city, or is it the same water, source water?
The chromium six is found in the groundwater, and it's been fairly uniform throughout all the groundwater.
So you can say with a certain amount of confidence that the water that we drink is essentially safe?
It's safe according to the standards. I am not a scientist.
Based on, I know you're not a scientist, you're just a general manager.
There are risks in everything, and there is.
There you go elaborating on my time. I don't want you to do that. You have plenty of time to give a report. You've done that. Now, if chlorine is going to have some effect on the groundwater, whichever the case may be, and raise the level of chromium six by whatever method, and I don't know, then what about fluoride, fluorine? Somebody spoke very eloquently about the contaminated water source. Is fluorine, are you concerned about that also, fluoridation? If you are, raise your hand. Well, you should have been here to speak against it when they were voting for it. Mr. Freeman was supporting that 1,000 percent. So, I mean, somewhere along the line, we got to come together and find out what you can drink and what you can't drink. Now, I must tell you, however, that in my office, as I would suspect in most offices, we have bottled, we don't drink tap water. In my home, I even filter the bottled water that I buy. So the person who's trapped is the person that lives throughout the city, for the most part, who cannot afford to buy water. And so when we vote to put more contaminants in the water, which we have done at the advice of the so-called experts, when they're not even doctors, but at the advice of the experts, then the water is contaminated to the extent where the person don't have a choice if they don't have the money.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Hernandez.
My time is up.
Yes, it is. Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Freeman, judging by the actions of my colleagues, are you 100 percent sure it's not the water?
I'll take the fifth on that one.
Which is kind of like, kind of questioning I've been hearing today. And members of the council, one, I agree that none of us are scientists, and the fact of the matter is, this is a very complicated issue. I also agree that we all want to have safe water. I was spreading the rumor that Councilmember Chick and Councilmember Wax were getting a lot of contributions from bottled water companies. But the reality is today, there's a lot of bottled water companies out there selling water. And I was asking myself, why DWP doesn't bottle its water and sell it as bottled water? Because we'd be receiving water from a lot of different sources, and there has to be some system to guarantee the quality of the water that people are drinking. But there's costs that are part of this process, and what I didn't see either one of the motions talk about is one of the costs associated with the actions of the policies that we're asking that be taken. And so I'd like to include that as part of the review. I'd like there to be some kind of cost analysis as to what we're talking about and how it is that we plan to overcome that cost, for the same reasons Mr. Holden brought up. I think it's important that we understand what it means to close our wells, not just in the valley, but throughout the system. I think it's important for us to understand what it means to filtrate and what's involved there, and how do you overcome it. I kind of share that, because I think it's important that we keep in mind the debates this council has had regarding water rates. And the fact of the matter is that some of us felt that some parts of the city were carrying the burdens for other parts of the city. And basically, it was on the backs of the poor that we allowed those communities that needed to use more water because of their swimming pools and their heating costs to basically overcome that rate difference. And so it's important that we understand what we're talking about. And so the dollar figures is important for me. I know what I'm paying when I buy a small bottle of water at a 7-Eleven. And the reality, I also know what I'm paying when I get a glass of water from my kitchen faucet. And right now, I feel both of them are safe. But at the same time, there is a cost differential, and I think we need to have those understandings. So I'd like to amend both motions that are going to committee, that the actions that we're asking the department to take, come back with some kind of analysis as to the cost factors involved and how it is that we can overcome them.
Okay. Is that okay with the makers of the motions? Yes, all right. Mr. Fuhr.
Mr. Freeman, are there particular wells that have higher levels of chromium six than other wells that also contain chromium six?
There were two such wells, and we shut them down immediately when we found out.
All right. But the balance of the, there is not any means by which to distinguish the balance of the wells.
No, sir.
From one another.
No, sir. And over time, if you shut down some wells, that water will migrate to the other wells, and the physical facts are that if the chromium's in the groundwater, it's going to come out of the wells that you're pumping.
All right. My other questions have been answered. Madam President, thank you.
Bruce?
Okay. Ms. Msakowski.
I just wanted to rise and particularly comment that Mr. Hernandez was talking about and trying to say that this was in some ways, in some ways our Citizens Act, a comparison between bottled water and water that we get from DWP. And members of the council, it's probably worthwhile to note that there is no standard for bottled water. So that, that people perceive because of advertising, because of the nice commercials of the free-running streams, as pure, better, a higher-quality water, that the state and no other agency establishes a standard. So one might perceive, you said you know what you're getting in terms of how you're paying for it and how much you're paying for it, but you don't know what you're getting, because there is no standard for that. And I think that the efforts that we are undertaking here and that Mr. Freeman initiated well over 18 months ago in terms of starting to do some of this testing and bring it to the attention, and what this motion, particularly Ms. Chick's motions, go through in terms of asking much higher level of study, analysis, moving forward to let the DWP continue to be the leader to alert other agencies, both at state and federal level, as well as other water agencies in our own area, as to what this is about and how we should collectively be pursuing it, I think is the right idea. But I think it's just important to note that 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 we think is safer, that is, the bottled water, has no standards whatsoever.
All right. We're ready to do round two, and we actually have somebody who's anxious to leave and anxious to vote on this. So can I ask your indulgent, oh, there we go again. We're not ready for round two? Mr. Savornich. Mr. Savornich moves the previous question. Is there any objection to the previous question? Hearing none. The motion before us is to approve items 31 and 32 with the, as amended by Mr. Hernandez's request for cost information, with the exception of the paragraph marked three, which will be referred to the Environmental Quality Committee. Open the roll on that motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you all. That is approved. Next item. Thank you, Jackie. Mr. Savornich.
Madam President, with your permission, I would like to ask reconsideration of item number 12, an item in my district. I was not present to vote, and I would like to be recorded as an I-vote, please.
How about if we just, yeah, well, oh, can't we just record him? Oh, no, we can't, because you weren't here.
If you could record me as an I-vote, I would appreciate it.
What was the vote? Let's find, let us find out what the actual vote was, and if it was a unanimous vote in favor, there's no way to reconsider it. Because, well, yeah, somebody who was on the prevailing side can move to, but you weren't here, so somebody else has to do it.
Someone could do that.
While we're finding that out, let us move to.
It was a unanimous vote, 12-0.
All right. Cindy moves reconsideration. Open the roll on item 12. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. You're on.
13 ayes.
Fourth with again.
Fourth with on item 12.
Thank you, councilwoman.
With Mr. Savornich's vote. All right. We are now ready for item 33, which was called special because we have two people who wish to be heard, so are we all still here? All right. We'll open the public hearing on item 33 and call Barry Broad and John Perez. You can speak in whichever order you like.
Okay. Madam President, members of the council, I'm Barry Broad. I'm the lobbyist for the Amalgamated Transit Union. I have the honor of having drafted SB 1101, though some people probably consider that a dubious honor. In any event, I do understand the bill and what it does and what it does not do, and in talking to some of you today, there's been considerable misstatements about what the bill does. It's really quite simple. What it says that in the event of the creation of a transportation zone, and it's not specific to any transportation zone, it just deals with it generally, that collective bargaining agreements and the obligation to bargain, as well as pension and health benefits, transfer to the zone operator, and that for a period of four years or the expiration of a collective bargaining agreement, which is the period during which the zone is a demonstration project, and can, if it doesn't work out, it would return to the MTA if it isn't become permanent. During that period, there would be a kind of multi-employer bargaining situation in which the zone would have sort of a side subcontract arrangement. Then at the end of that period, the zone would become fully independent for collective bargaining purposes. So all this bill does is does the same thing that legislation dealing with other issues of devolution, if you will, and orderly transfer of labor relations have done with regard to employees of the school system, county employees, city employees. It's been done on any number of pieces of legislation. The bill does not prohibit the creation of transportation zones. In fact, at the request of Assemblymember Hertz. In fact, at the request of Assemblymember Hertzberg, the bill has a provision that says that the transportation zone has to save no more money than what is, it can be save money, but it doesn't have to save more money than the operation of the MTA. So, for those who wish to have independence and autonomy from the MTA, it probably makes that easier. All the opponents of the bill have said all along that they do not wish to create transportation zones on the back of the workers of the MTA, who would lose everything on the first day of the creation of a transportation zone without the bill. But they've unfortunately never found their way to be able to find an enforceable way of doing that. There are significant legal issues that require this be done at state law, because the MTA is a creation of state law, and the transportation zone concept is a creation of state law. So, I would urge you to hear this matter and to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Betis. I'm the political director of the California Labor Federation. We too support this bill. We think it's an important piece of legislation, and the council's action in support of it would demonstrate a strong commitment to supporting the rights of workers, to maintain collective bargaining agreements, and to retain, maintain access to pension and other benefits that they currently enjoy. We urge you to hear this today, and urge you to vote for it today as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Burnson is first.
Yes, members of the council, this legislation is a little more than what you were just told. First of all, in the negotiations, or what can be termed "lack of negotiations," one of the comments of the ATU was that they were firm that under no circumstances could there be zones, meaning the valley zone. Also in this legislation, basically, as part of the offer, was offered by MTA, and I'm not trying to break any blackout now, which has been imposed, but this is public knowledge. There was an offer, how to deal with this, providing a period of time of three or four years, up to five years, for observing of the same rules that are in play as far as the MTA current employees are concerned, with any employees that went to the zone. The answer was absolutely no, under any circumstances. The zone issue was the killer, and was what would create the strike. There have been no negotiations on this, in spite of what you may hear. I mean, the unions basically have refused to negotiate until just this last couple of days. They waited to create a strike so they could negotiate when they did, and try to put pressure on the backs of the poor people who depend upon public transportation and have no other means of dealing with it. If we support this legislation, we're asking the governor, in effect, to kill any potentiality of a valley zone. That's what it really boils down to, or any other zone. I would urge that we either not take any action on this, or we ask the governor to veto this. One of the ways to settle this dispute is with additional legislation, which has to be agreed to by both the state legislature, the unions, and MTA, including the valley zone, or any others that may be potentially. And that would be to set some standards for a period of time in which the same standards would be in effect for the new employees of the new zone. And after that period, they would be subject to the same contract negotiations as we have with our unions. So, I would ask, and I'm going to make a substitute motion, and that motion is that we ask the governor to veto this, and then, and I would ask for a second, and I would ask that we then ask the unions, the MTA, and the legislature to negotiate a bill which will properly deal with protecting the rights of those workers that may be in a zone, and give them the same protections, without the right to veto, and I might add, without the right to veto any new zone. And that's what the legislation contains. So, I would urge an aye vote, either on asking the governor to veto, or perhaps this entire matter should be sent to committee to transportation. And the governor has till Saturday to act on this thing. I'm hoping he will veto it. I don't know what he's going to do.
Okay, Mr. Burnson.
I'll conclude, and I won't talk, I won't talk again, Ruth. So, that would be my motion first.
We got your motion.
And then, that we send it to Transportation Committee.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Burnson, really, I wish you that simple. The fact of the matter is that this legislation is a wrapper on, as relates to solving the strike as well. There is some concern on the part of the workers, that you will pit one transportation district against another, and have the workers pay the price, lower benefits, lower wages, lower health benefits. And I don't think that's what we really want. That's not what we're all about. And why is it, and where is it written, that the worker, for the most part, have to stand up and fight to keep what they have? Now, you sit on the board, and I ask you, you have two arms, and I'm going to settle this negotiation if I say, you give me one arm that you have, and we'll settle it. And that's a graphic example of what's happened to the employees. Give back some rights, give back some benefits, and you'll have no strike. So, the MTA can make more of a profit to offset whatever deficit they may have created for themselves. Now, I just don't think that's fair, to balance your budget on the backs of the employees. It happens too much on the part of elected officials. They go after the weak, and the meek, and the ones who less, more disadvantaged. I mean, I've seen the sanitation workers, sanitation workers, I've seen them kicked to the curb. Where the fat cat gives themselves more money, more benefits, more raises, more better quarters, better facilities. Look, there's no way in the world that we cannot be sensitive to what grief this city is being subjected to. I mean, the businesses are losing every day we're out. Fifty percent down, the businesses are. The economy is suffering. And if somebody is going to sit over there and say, well, give me another day, give me another overtime hour that you have, while the businesses are suffering, that is totally irresponsible. And then you say, then I'll create another zone and pay them less, and then you guys fight it out. What are you trying to do? Generate a war between the employees of the new zone and this one? I just don't understand the logic. Because it's totally illogical to have somebody give away their rights and their benefits that they worked hard for. You want to give away some sick days, too? I guess, I got eight minutes. I'm just fed up with the whole transaction. I ask you for an aye vote. A no vote on this motion to send it to committee, and aye vote on the majority.
Yeah, that's the substitute motion. Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I think this is, again, another one of those sad commentaries that have to be made about public policymakers in the city of Los Angeles. And when I say that, when I signed this motion, I clearly signed it, understanding that we had debated the issue of being one city, and that we had said that when it came to public transportation, we wanted all city residents to basically have equal systems. And that basically, today, we have an example where all city residents have the same system. There's a strike going on, but all residents are impacted the same, who need public transportation. That's not the case in Foothill. That zone has public transportation. That's not the case in Santa Monica, and that's not the case in other areas. When we start dividing the city into zones for public transportation, we're basically saying that the valley should have a system different from the inner city. And especially if we basically ask the governor to veto this legislation. I just have a problem with it, because I happen to know that I have a large proportion of constituents who are transit-dependent, public transportation-dependent. They don't have automobiles. And yes, they do come from Westlake and go to the West Side, and they go to the valley, and they do the jobs that have to be done to earn an honest dollar. And they take that bus. And that's what the articles are that you're reading. You're reading about the people of Berendow having to deal with how to get to work. You're not reading about the people in the valley, how they're dealing with the issue of getting to work. But yet, we are talking about a transit system that would be different for them from the one from the inner city. And the whole issue has been the labor issue. I say it's a sad note as public policymakers, because we're either here under the belief that all our constituents are the same, and deserve the same kind of systems, and we're willing to fight for those systems, regardless of the political issues. To allow for a different union to represent city employees in the valley is different in regards to street maintenance, in regards to police, in regards to firefighters. We're not making those same proposals. But yet, we're saying we can do that when it comes to transportation. Again, I support the motion. I just asked for an aye vote, so that we have a consistent system throughout our city, and we can move forward in regards to trying to create a valley zone, where those labor issues basically being the same.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Mizakowski.
As I heard the testimony from the members of the public who spoke, who are very intimately involved in this, and as I heard Mr. Burnson speak, I heard essentially a lot in common, and a lot of what was intended or understood to be how we would move forward if new transit zones were created. What I then heard was recommendations totally the opposite, one to ask the governor to support the bill, and one to ask the governor to veto the bill. But there was in common, understanding and principles that should be moving forward that I think everyone agrees with. Since there is often the issue of the devil in the details, and unclarity as to the bill, and what the bill would do, as I've talked to the CLA, in terms of during a current contract, beyond the current contract, and the rights involved, it seems to me that the only way that we can really, with knowledge, understand what's going on is to send this to committee, and ask, actually, what Mr. Burnson has asked for, and that is, the set of principles that everyone agrees with be embodied in state legislation, if necessary, or in other action by MTA or other agency, which says that these new transit zones will not be created on the backs of current workers, but literally, any new transit zone, anything else, has the right to negotiate beyond the current contract with their employees, as anyone else would. And so, I think the principles, as they're espoused, make sense, and I think the principles is what everyone around the table would have no problem with. But it's not clear to me that this bill, what this bill really does, and how it addresses those principles in the details. So, I think the motion to send it to committee, and asking that we come back with a bill that embodies, support for a bill, and request for a bill that embodies those principles, makes sense.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, it seems to me that the issue of new transit zones and the like, on their own, have merit. Those issues do have merit. But when they become synonymous with the creation of such transit zones at the expense of the working men and women of MTA, or those prospective transit zones, that becomes very problematic. And I'm afraid that the hard-fought gains that have been realized by workers that are MTA-related are at risk. Mr. Holden makes reference to the issue of the strike. Unfortunately, we have a situation where we are trying to decide this issue of SB 1101, against the backdrop of the strike, that becomes problematic. Be that as it may, it is, in fact, before us. The MTA wrote the governor, over the signature of its CEO, and makes a point rather clear in an interesting way. He says, "Last year, Mr. Governor, you vetoed SB 372, a bill which was nearly identical to SB 1101, indicating that the zone labor issue should be decided at the local level, although you wanted to be sure that the transfer of service to any new zone would not harm employees." Well, that's precisely what's at stake with 1101, protection for employees. So, it seemed to me, members of the council, our message to the governor to sign SB 1101 is quite an order. It's an order today, it would be an order tomorrow, it would be an order if it were to happen yesterday, irrespective of the strike and the impetus to resolve it. It would seem to me that the fundamental issues of being addressed in this piece of legislation would go a long way toward securing the kind of quality of life for those who are directly affected, literally thousands, thousands of employees, is fundamentally before us. And while we conveniently bifurcate the issue of workers' rights from those of the transit-dependent, I would simply say, we should not do that. Why? For the following reason: those persons who are MTA employees have families, many of whom take advantage of public transportation, bus and rail. And so, it would seem to me that we need to look at this in a more holistic fashion, and recognize that all of those who we are concerned about, workers and those who are constituents otherwise situated, deserve our best thinking. And in this instance, it would be to support the motion to ask the governor to sign SB 1101.
Thank you.
And I commend it to you.
Thank you. Mr. Wax.
I support Mr. Burnson's motion. The whole purpose of having, the whole purpose of having the zone is to try to provide better service for the people who use the system. The studies have shown, and I think experience has shown, that you can have a more efficient service, at perhaps less cost, and improved frequency of service. And who benefits from that? You know, basically, we talk about this being a labor issue, but the people, in addition to seniors and young people who benefit from it, are primarily workers, people who have lower incomes, who use the bus to go to work. They're the beneficiaries, more than anyone else, the people who most need assistance, the people who are the ones we have fought for, for a living wage and other things. They're, I mean, they're basically, buses are used to a great degree by the people who are either too old, too disabled, too young, or too poor, to have options. We have a duty in front of us to provide transportation as an option to a greater range of people, so that we can really begin to take people out of their cars, and make public transportation something that middle-class and upper-middle-class people are also willing to use, as they do in a lot of other cities. And part of the way you do that is by providing them with a system that's attractive. In this case, however, we're immediately dealing with, by and large, people who are workers. And so, I don't think that's really fair to sort of pit this as something as pro or anti-labor, when the primary beneficiary on improved service, either in terms of improved service, or lower fares, or both, are working class. So, I think we have to approach this, and I think that there is a way to come to an accommodation, as suggested by perhaps Mr. Burnson, of what we really should sit down and negotiate, recognizing who the stakeholders really are in all of this. There should be a way to come to an accommodation to protect the interests of all the people that we have been addressing here in our comments this morning.
Mr. Fuhr. Okay. We have, well, we'll take a vote on that in a sec. Now, we have somebody else who hasn't spoken yet. Hang on. Mr. Fuhr, we're going to put you up for the first time later. All right. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. This is another tough one, and I've heard good arguments on both sides. On the one hand, if I look at just one perspective of, you know, the San Fernando Valley, and yes, I am vice chair of the interim JPA for the Valley Transit Zone, the selfish perspective will be, do whatever it takes, at any cost, to ensure a valley transit zone that can be run cheaper for the folks in the valley. Cheaper doesn't always mean better. And the true talk, the true spirit, I believe, that I'm putting into the work for the Valley Transit Zone, is to achieve the goal of better, more affordable service for the people in the valley. On the other hand, my Hernandez, I do hear you, and anybody, everybody else who's repeated, this is one of the big milestones for us, if we're going to continue to be one city or one region, because today is the transit zone, or not. Tomorrow, it could be whether or not we're breaking up the school district, we're all working in the backdrop of secession. There's a number of things that are really testing the ties of the city, of whether we are regions that peacefully coexist, or if we really are one city. are regions that peacefully coexist or if we really are one city, one large community with one identity, one spirit. And I'm being torn on both sides. There's some other more specific and substantive issues. Obviously, the MTA strike that is looming and the talk and the articles and the sentiment that those who are hurt most by the MTA strike are not the MTA board or administrators or the employees of the MTA, but the riders who are suffering and struggling to get to work each and every day, to get to school each and every day, like the students in my district, to people who are struggling to take themselves or their kids to the doctor and have conditions that could be worsening because the cab is just too expensive. But I don't downplay the protection of the workers either. They've struggled too hard and too long to achieve the status that they have, to try to leave not rich but comfortably, to have achieved the middle class, the same struggle that the people, the vast majority of the people who are riding the buses are trying to achieve. But I guess the feather that's going to make the decision for me is the very promising report that the consultant presented to the interim JPA at the last Transit Zone Board meeting that actually took place. And that was this. It was just the first presentation, but it was significant. It showed a model that if you were to leave the labor agreements in place as they currently exist, a transit zone can still work. And having heard that in one ear and through the other ear, have heard some of the most ardent proponents of a separate Valley Transit Zone, them telling me that a Valley Transit Zone, they acknowledge, will only work if labor is supportive, if labor has cooperated and if labor has been part of that solution. That has ultimately led me to support this motion. I do think it merits further review, and I will support the initial motion to send it all to committee.
No, no. Look, that's not the initial motion. Excuse me. Your time's up. So you finish, and then I'll go through.
Fifteen more seconds. But Councilmember Burnson made a motion to send this to committee and have the more thorough review come back with the recommendation. But I also know that I will practically be chastised for this vote if it doesn't go to committee. And all I want to say for those who are going to rake me over the coals is let those who ride the buses be the first to cast a stone.
Okay. Thank you. Just for clarification, I have three people now who want to speak a second time, but just for clarification, it's my understanding that Mr. Burnson's motion, substitute motion, was to request that the governor veto the proposal. Oh, it was a separate motion? All right. There are two substitute motions. Okay. And, and Mr. Burnson's other motion was to send the matter to committee. So when we get that far, we'll vote on them in that order on whether to substitute each of those motions for the initial motion, and then we'll see what happens.
A motion to go to committee is a procedural motion.
All right. Well, we're not even close. Mr. Savornich for the first time.
The previous question on the entire matter.
All right. Is there any objection to the previous question? All right. We have, well, Mr. Burnson, Mr. Holden, and Mr. Hernandez had all asked to speak again. All right. So the first, all right.
I want, no vote, no vote on the previous question.
Are we okay? We're going to vote. All right. The first motion is to send the whole thing to committee. Open the roll.
No, no, no. We haven't voted on the previous question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just asked if there was an objection. I thought you had not objected.
Yeah, I objected. I asked for a no vote.
All right. In that case, hold on. Let's just open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six yes, seven no.
All right. So that is not approved, and let me, then I have to take people in order here. Mr. Burnson, do you still want to speak?
Yeah. There were a couple remarks made that I just had, could not let rest. First of all, let me say that it was not the MTA board that created the strike, that walked away and left the people out there without transportation. Let me just say that there was no move whatsoever for the unions to negotiate anything until the cooling off period was over, which brought the strike and brought the pressure upon the negotiations at that point. And there was little regard on their part for the poor people that you're talking about, Mr. Padilla. They could have continued to negotiate and continued to work and continued under the same contract they've had, which has expired. There would have been no problem. But they chose to create this strike to put the pressure on. So let's put the blame where it belongs. Second of all, let's talk about all these poor people. These drivers make an average somewheres between, some of the drivers make as high as $80,000 a year with their overtime. Average is about $50,000 a year. The salaries, in spite of what the, what you read reported in the paper, the salaries with the overtime and other work rules, which are one of the key basis of negotiations now that need to be amended, make these not among the highest, but the highest with their benefits. Let me just say that I'm not known as somebody that's been anti-union. I've supported virtually all the union things. You've seen me around the circle. I have no objection to protecting those workers' rights. It's the manner in which it's done, and it's not done under the atmosphere of people not being able to get to work or to school. It's done in a proper manner, and there was an offer made that would have protected the rights of the workers should a zone go into effect. Yet, there was an absolute denial of that and a rejection. So I just want to make it clear that this is, the argument you're getting is not a straight argument. And let me say something else, Mr. Holden. There is no profit. The people of Los Angeles, the people of the county are the ones that pay for this transportation, and you know that. They're the ones that pay for this transportation. If you think the fares that are collected pay for the, for the transportation that's provided, you're absolutely wrong. It's the, it's the taxpayers that pay for the transportation, and we are, we have a duty to protect that right and that, and that, so that that is not out of line. Furthermore, if all the demands were met, this cost would result in higher fares to the riders. I just want you to know that. So you know what you're talking about is not just zone. I wasn't going to answer this because, but Mr. Holden made some statements I just couldn't let rest. Anyway, at any rate, I would urge this entire thing go to committee. The ball's in the governor's court. He has till Saturday to act. We don't know what's going to happen. But regardless of what happens, I challenge the unions, I challenge you to negotiate in good faith, to get together with the legislature and with our board, let's work out some rules that will protect the workers and yet allow, should there be zones created in the future, that they be allowed to operate and also protect the workers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burnson. All right. Now, we have, Mark, just let me, no, he's only 16 seconds over, and some of that was you talking. All right. Now, Mr. Holden had asked to close, so I'm going to call Mr. Hernandez first and then Mr. Holden to close.
Members of the council, the only reason I wanted to rise a second time is I don't want to be taken for a ride. And when I say that is, we've had this discussion before. I think Councilmember Padilla very eloquently stated that you can deal with the labor issues and deal with the, basically, the pay issues and the collective bargaining issues and still have a transit zone that can improve service. And to me, those collective bargaining issues are important if we're one city. And so I know when we were here before, I agreed to allow this to go to committee when I had the opportunity to basically kill it. And I don't know if you remember those debates, but I became one of those votes that allowed it to go to committee because I wanted to study it. I wanted to know if we could have the same equal bargaining issues and still provide better service. And Mr. Padilla is saying that's what the consultant is saying. My concern is, again, the question of cities and how we treat people in the city and how we treat employees who provide services in the city. It doesn't make sense to allow for a different treatment of people who are providing the same kind of service within our city boundaries. And I share that very openly because if that's the case, let's just stop this next transit zone in the harbor area, the next transit zone in another area, and what do you leave in the middle? What do you leave in the most transit-dependent area of the city? How do you strap them? When we talked about water rates, we clearly understood that if you want to lower the rates in one part of the city for a particular type of customer, you got to increase them on another part of the city. And those are the kinds of debates we're having. When we talk about leadership, there's going to come a point when each and every one of us has to decide what we stand for. And I agree with Mr. Wax, the issue is service. The issue is the quality of service to the most constituents possible, but I want it to be equal. And you can't do it by having two separate bargaining units in regards to the same labor of work. So basically, I know how the transit zone was working in foothill, and I'm hoping that this one will be different, and that's why I have faith and confidence that supporting this legislation is not going to kill the concept that we're trying to develop.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I had announced Mr. Holden would be next to close, but Mrs. Walters has asked to speak, and she hadn't spoken before. So, Ms. Walters.
I'm, too, am concerned about the bifurcation of the city or even the splitting of the city into many more disparate parts. The transit system, when I first came to Los Angeles, was made up of several different things. There was the green buses, and I don't know what the name of that company was, but they went to different parts of the city, and you could connect from city buses to the green buses. There were the red cars then and various other bus lines and what have you. And then they had the idea of making it all one transportation system, and that was the outgrowth of RTD, although it was named something before it got to be RTD. When I hear people talking about a smaller unit, they're able to operate more efficiently and more cheaply, a red flag goes up because I know the only way they're going to operate more cheaply is to pay less money and to have a less experienced workforce and probably require longer hours of work by their employees. So I don't think there's anything in a separate transit system in the valley breaking off for the employees. The other thing that it seems to me is inherent in this, if they can break the valley off, they probably figure that they'll have a more conservative, less labor-oriented management group or oversight group or board of directors than they currently have. So I don't think this, if our concern is for the workers, I don't think breaking this off is going to do diddly for the workers. And I think that we really need to work out our problems within the system as it currently stands. Thank you.
All right. Now, we've had another person join the queue here. Mr. Wax, I had told Mr. Holden he was going to get to close. You need to.
I'll be very brief. I want to comment on one thing. And Ms. Walters said, I think there's, today in the paper, there's a survey that actually shows that our drivers here are being paid less than, say, in Boston, but still, despite the fact in Boston that they're paying more, their cost for overall ridership is lower so that there are ways to make savings that aren't necessarily at the expense of the drivers. And in fact, it's the unions that are using that information that was provided today to indicate that very fact, that there are other, there are many places to make savings in a system if it's not being run as efficiently as possible and that they're not necessarily at the expense, because as I say, that the drivers in Boston are making substantially more than the drivers here are making, and yet their overall cost of service is less. There, and there has to be an area in which savings can occur other than what you just mentioned.
Okay. Mr. Holden to close.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The fact of the matter is that you keep saying how much money do drivers earn. They work overtime because the management of MTA required that they work overtime in order to meet the peak hour transit. They work so many hours in the morning, so many hours in the afternoon, and they have to lay over. Sometime, they work 50 hours a week that's required. And I was a member of RTD and LACTC, and they required the drivers to be posted in the list and called them in to work overtime. So they went up to hire additional people, part-timers or full-timers, to fill the void. And now they're going to blame the, use an example that they're making a lot of money? The paramedics here in the city, because we have such a shortage, had to work many hours, and many of them are earning close to $100,000 a year. And you know why? Because we scrapped the paramedic program as we once knew it. Just remember that. Now, Mr. Burnson, they lied to you when they said the union left the table. They lied to you because the union was there to sign the tentative agreement to continue working, and Julian Burke didn't show up to sign. He sent the guy over there who says, "I have no authority to sign," and I am not lying. The fact of the matter is that the MTA, and you remember the board, is crippling this city. Stop the baloney. If you want to get those kids to school, those seniors for their health care, the sick people, the disabled, hey, move forward today. This is the first step. Why is it that the underprivileged worker sometimes has got to fight like heck to defend himself, even when his own people are representing him? What has it come to? I mean, how often are we brainwashed to? Vote no against the substitute motion. Vote to get the people back to work and transport those bus riders. The time has come, and it's long overdue. No on the substitute motion, aye on the original motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. All right. I believe we are ready to vote. There are 12 of us here. Okay. The first motion, Mr. Wax is correct, the motion to go to committee takes precedence. So the first motion, first vote is on whether to send the whole thing to committee. Open the roll, close the roll, open.
It's not working.
No, it's not working here either. Okay. Okay. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, seven noes.
All right. It is not sent to committee. Then the next vote is to substitute, whether to substitute Mr. Burnson's motion to request a veto. Okay. So this is whether to substitute. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, nine noes.
Okay. That is not approved, and the original motion is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that, since it won't matter if we don't do it forthwith. Okay. That completes most of the agenda. That's approved. Thank you, gentlemen. The, what was the final vote on that? Nine to?
Nine to three.
Nine to three. Okay. All right. We have a closed session item, but before we go into closed session, we have, we're going to do public comment, and then we're going to go to the closed session. So this is the time for public comment on items not on the agenda. Ms. Leaning.
Yes.
Well, hold on a second. Let me get you some order here. Can you guys sort of move away from the?
Yes. First, Leaning Solentanga, "Councilmember with the Lincoln Town Car, yes, the businesses also suffered during the DNC. Keep that in mind. Yes, I am back to say, I told you so. This has to do with the hundreds of millions of dollars that were to accrue to Los Angeles from the DNC Democratic National Convention being held in Los Angeles, and they did not. Once again, I told you so." Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period since we have no other cards, and we're now going to go into closed session on item 34. While we're, want to clear the desk while we're doing it.
Motion for post-numerary.
So, hold on one second. Those of you who are not involved in item 34, I need to ask you to depart reasonably It's a closed session regarding a lawsuit, it's a closed session regarding a lawsuit on the Millow Act of 1982 that took affordable housing out of the coastal zone mandate but left it with us. Do not all depart at once. We are down to 10 members. The next person who leaves is breaking a quorum. Don't leave. All right. Let's clear the desk while we're clearing the room. Go ahead.
Motion for post-numerary referral.
Those are approved.
Okay. Councilmembers request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused today, September 27th, excuse me, tomorrow, September 27th, to arrive late. Motion is required.
All right. Mr. Holden moves. Mr. Burnson seconds. Go ahead.
The desk is clear except for item 34.
Okay. So we're waiting to get into session here. Okay, so we're waiting to get into session here. We're already open, as it happens. Okay, well, we seem to be back, Ms. Walters is back, all right. Open the roll on item 34, the city attorney's recommendation. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. It's all yours, Claudia. Okay, and I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
It does. The desk is clear.
All right, we have some adjourning motions. Would everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Just for variety, we're gonna go in the opposite direction today. Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmembers, I ask you to adjourn today in memory of a woman who contributed much to our city, through her own work, and through the support of, supporting her husband in his work. That was Frances Barrett White, who was the wife of Charles White, renowned artist, who has done such magnificent work over the years. And Fran was a social worker, who worked on behalf of children who were in dire straits for many, many years. And she just did an absolutely wonderful job. She wrote a book about her life with Charlie, called Reaches of the Heart. Fran was always known as a giving, graceful-spirited woman, who loved life. Her husband, Charlie, preceded her in death, in many, many years ago, about 20 years ago. She's survived by her daughter Jessica, her son Ian, many extended family members, the Shaw family of Los Angeles, Aaron Valerie Shaw, and Ann Shaw, the Gordons of New York, the Dixons of Hawaii, and scores of relatives and friends. And Fran will be sorely missed.
I'd like to join you in that.
Yeah, I'd like to join.
Make it unanimous.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Hope many of us caught the news over the weekend, but we requested we adjourn in memory of Carl Rowan, the grueling journalist, and bestselling author, and defender of affirmative action. He passed away this last Saturday, at the age of 75, and was living in Washington. If we recall, his first job in journalism was as a copy editor at the Minneapolis Tribune. And as a reporter, he covered civil rights battles in the South, including Supreme Court's decision to require school desegregation. His involvement in race relations made him not only highly visible amongst African-American men, but journalists across the board, and served under the Kennedy administration as Assistant Secretary of State. He returned to journalism in 1965, after a brief hiatus, and will certainly be missed.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam President, members of the council, we have a new employee in our office, and she just started with us within the last month, and she's dealt with two immediate deaths, the people who are very close to her. So, I ask us to adjourn in the name of Barbara Faduya, who was 50 years old. She passed away September 17th. She'd been fighting cancer in the pancreas for the last three years. She leaves her husband, five children, and two grandchildren. I also would ask that we adjourn in the name of Manu Padilla, who is 53 years old, he passed away September 24th, again diagnosed with stomach cancer. He was a construction worker, and he leaves his son and daughter, and fiancee. He was to be buried in April of 2001.
Mr. Bernson for an announcement.
Yes, the Planning Land Use Management Committee will meet in 10 minutes.
Okay, call the roll.
President, I'd like to be in the car.
Oh, sorry.
Rowan, I'd like to be a second.
Yes, okay. Okay, go.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're adjourned.